Okay, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to this Reinbeck Town Board meeting of March 8th at 6:00 PM. Would everybody please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Thank you. But everybody who is not Town Board members, please mute yourselves. Thank you. Okay, we have two public hearings open tonight. One for a local law amending our town code, Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of adding definitions pertaining to hospitality uses, et cetera. And the second, a local law amending the town code, Chapter 125 zoning, Section 68mm in the matter of revising country into standards, et cetera. We have made some minor revisions to the second law, which are posted on our town website. We will hold these public hearings open until our next meeting, so that people have had a chance to read them and can make comments. Our lawyer has, Michael Zarin, has said that they're not substantive, and we can go ahead and do our environmental impact statements and our seeker and stuff like that. Michael, would you like to take over at this point?
Sure. So listed on the website will or shall be some of the minor changes we made, as well as the SECRE analysis, both the EAF form for each of the amendments, as well as a supplemental analysis we did for each of the local laws. The changes in the local law regarding the country to win, while they are substantive, there, I have a point that I don't think they're material changes with respect to impacts and alike in light of requiring a new notice or referrals. One thing we did is we changed the terms regarding, there was some, there was some question about in the, the private membership clubs, it was subject to various, all lodging combinations and various restaurant food and beverage services. We changed that subject to equivalent type and quality for food and beverage operations. So I think that the meaning is pretty much the same. It was just, I think it's clearer than the term various. We also changed, we had a term on non-discriminatory terms with respect to the membership. We expanded that in accordance with a comment that we received without regard to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, marital status, sexual, gender orientation, political affiliation. So that was suggested by one of the comments that we received. We also received comments from Planning Board and others as to the amounts of lodging units and maximum guest rooms that were permitted, both from the Planning Board and the county, from the county. So what we did in this is, again, I think we get pretty much close to the same place, but we returned to the 100 lodging units as the, lack of a better term, the as of right or the starting point without a bonus. And then instead of a 10% bonus, we added a 15% bonus. So with the bonus, again, with respect to adaptive reuse, you can get to 115 lodging units as opposed to 120 one lodging units where we were at before. So the other thing that we did is that we, we made the maximum guest rooms. And again, we separated guest rooms and bedrooms definitionally. The only real change of definitions was guest rooms referred to commercial hospitality and bedrooms to residential. And again, that was in accordance with some comments that we had received. So we, we set forth a maximum bed guest rooms in the country to win at 135 without the bonus. And then what we did is we included a 15, a 15 guest room bonus with the creation of the provision of publicly accessible hiking trails of similar facilities as determined by the Planning Board. We also did this because if you look at the existing language of the original language in this, we found that it was inconsistent. And one said, it said that the applicant shall provide hiking trails. And then it, it ended the sentence to the maximum extent practicable, which in our view, one's mandatory and one's discretionary. So we, we combined it and we thought that this was a worthy objective. And we made it an incentive to get 15 additional guest rooms to get up from the 135 to the maximum 150. Again, I think this was offered both for clarity's sake. I think we were responsive to some of the comments we were receiving. And you know, some of the comments were some, some people questioned whether 150 guest rooms might be too much. The county opined that 150 might not be enough. So we arrived at the same number, final 150, but to use as an incentive on the, on the hiking trails, which again, may or may not have been offered or set forth in the, in the existing language. So those are really the only changes. As you can see, we prepared a pretty lengthy supplemental EAF explaining the board's rationale and background, including some, some quantitative analysis on looking at the difference between 110 guest rooms and 150 guest rooms, taking into consideration that under the existing law of the town, there is no cap or maximum on guest rooms or bedrooms pursuant to the zoning administrator's most recent opinion. But nevertheless, for the purposes of trying to understand the impacts of, of going from what maybe some would consider 110 to 150, we did some quantitative analysis as part of the SECRE review of that with respect to traffic and sewer and water and general character and alike. So that is set forth in the SECRE finding, which again, is not something that typically, you know, SECRE findings, hard look for negative declarations are not, are not something that's necessarily circulated for public review and comment. But since the board already has it prepared and has taken it into consideration, they have determined to make it public for any, anybody that who wants to look at it and understand the rationale a little better. So Supervisor, that's introduction.
Thank you. Well done. Any comments from Town Board members? Questions? Okay, so we will hold this public hearing open until our next meeting, which I believe is on the 26th.
22nd.
22nd. And we will take any public comments and close and you know, we will hear what we hear and hopefully vote on it at our next meeting. Any comments, questions from the public? Sean, you're on mute.
Good evening. I just, I arrived a little late. I apologize. I didn't know if Mr. Zarin went over both proposed ordinances or was his talk just about the country in definitions?
I believe there are no changes to the hospitality definitions. Is that correct, Michael?
No, the, the only change is from the, from the last, I believe, the last draft that was circulated to the public was that there were comments about separating Sean, the guest rooms from bedrooms, that guest rooms would, would apply to commercial hospitality, whereas bedrooms would be for residential. I believe prior, I believe in our prior draft was already the, that the, for, for purposes of calculating density that in the country to in, in the commercial hospitality, it was contemplated that there could be up to four individuals per guest room, whereas under the residential, it's two. And again, that's just a guide or a maximum as to what there could be. The Planning Board in their analysis of impacts can reduce that amount if they feel it's, it's appropriate in their final SECRE analysis. But certainly that, that is a, not an atypical worst case scenario. You know, two beds and a cot, it's not, it's not unusual in, in the commercial hospitalities. Otherwise, I don't believe Sean, there were any, any changes than what had already been circulated.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. In any case, this is all posted on our website. It will be released again with our agenda before our next meeting on the 22nd. And we're holding this open and putting off considering voting until the next meeting, so that all of you who haven't had a chance to review the final drafts and the seeker and our EAF and supplemental analysis can do so.
Excellent. So that's with respect to both proposed ordinances, just to be clear. Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, it's Victoria Polidoro. Just want to say thank you for the drafts. We just received them and we will be reviewing them for the next meeting.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Let's move on then. We have a presentation tonight from Jim Levy, our Town Planner, on a year-end review of Planning Board activities. Jim, thank you. Michael, you know, I think we can say goodnight to you unless you want to stay for our whole Town Board meeting.
Oh, thank you. I gotta get away. Maybe I can get to top bunk if I get out early.
All right. Thank you for all your good work on this. We will speak to you soon, if not at our next meeting.
All right. All right. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Take it away, Jim.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Here I will bring up a PowerPoint on the screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes tonight to go through kind of the highlights of what happened here in 2020. Everyone on the call knows, but I am the Town Planning Consultant, working a lot with those of you on this call and the Planning Board. Michael and Melody from the Planning Board are on here as well. And mainly, the point of tonight was just to kind of go through the highlights of what, you know, went on in town last year. I'm sure everyone is aware of what happened, but getting to just quickly some of the details, because there's a lot happening in Reinbeck. So really quickly, last year, the board began with a full member board. Woody resigned in the spring of 2020, right around the time of COVID. And so we went down to a six-member board. And our last pre-COVID in-person meeting was held March 2nd, 2020. Our meetings were then paused for a little while while we started figuring things out. And we resumed our meetings on June 1st, 2020 with Zoom, with Zoom meetings, with our six board members running from June to the end of last year. All of our meetings from June 1st on to the end of the year were done by Zoom, by Zoom, and they're still being done that way today. So the way that the Planning Board efforts work typically, we, we start out with applications that come in, you know, to the town, and then they come to the Planning Board for, for a pre-conference meeting. And I just wanted to kind of show everyone what, what was going on in each of the quarters last year. You know, typically on average, we're seeing, you know, 16, 17 applications come in per quarter for our pre-conference meetings. And these meetings then very often, but not always, lead to an application going before the Planning Board. Obviously, in the second quarter of last year, that dipped a lot due to COVID, which is to be expected, but then it picked right back up again in quarter three when we started our meetings again. And in the, the second kind of light gray box there, it just shows a number of, you know, what it is that we were taking a look at in terms of the projects last year. Everything from, you know, many additions that were proposed to lot line adjustments, pool installations, renovations, a couple subdivisions. We've had some, some dwelling conversions, fenced installations, you know, window installations and skylights and things. Number of projects that looked at elements going into or near the wetlands. We looked at an exterior stage and quite a few solar projects, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail. And then in the, you know, similar vein, Planning Board meetings that are held last year, we typically scheduled one, one month, and then two every other month. So the first quarter, we held all meetings as scheduled. The second quarter, three of our scheduled meetings were not held due to COVID. Then in quarter three, we actually bumped up our meetings. So we scheduled two additional meetings. So we made up two of the three that we had lost in the second quarter. And then in the final quarter of last year, we did hold all five meetings as scheduled. So all in all, when the year ended, we really only ended up missing out on one meeting for the year of 2020. So within those meetings, I just thought it would be interesting to show you how many project presentations we are reviewing. This does not necessarily mean that these are individual projects. People, you know, come in for a preliminary project and then they'll come in for a public hearing. So there may be a particular project that's in here twice. But effectively, what the Planning Board is doing every quarter is seeing somewhere between 30 and, you know, 35 or so project presentations each quarter. We've had a number of referrals. They come from either the ZBA or the zoning administrator. And we started noticing in the fourth quarter of last year, a number of timeline extension requests started coming in. And we've seen some of those as well, where people need a little bit more time to get their projects off the ground after they get Planning Board approval. So this is kind of where we get into the, some of the more interesting aspects of what's going on in the town. There are currently five large projects that are going on in the town that we consider to be large. They've been going on for a little while now. They include Rockledge up in the RC5, in the eastern part of the town, 36 dwelling units on 135 acres. Grassmere, which we just discussed a little earlier, but related to the zoning, which is a country into on 250 acres. Ruggie's Automotive is proposing to move their service to the ORP site, which is located on Route 9G. Reinbeck Villas, which is a hotel proposal, also located along Route 9G. And then KPH2 Astor Courts, which is a master plan for the four properties, including the Astor Courts house, including Aster's house. And then also in 2020, we actually approved the largest onsite solar project that we reviewed that year on Mr. DeCola's property that we put on top of his existing structures. So some of the common themes that we saw coming out of the work last year, we have had a significant number of residential additions and renovation projects, as I had mentioned a moment ago. And some of these have been pretty significant. There are a lot of renovation projects going on that are very large and include a lot of work and a lot of money being invested into existing properties in, within the town. We saw quite a few ground mounted solar projects. All of these were for onsite usage, so for use by the property owner. But I just wanted to point out, some of the arrays were actually pretty large. We had one array that was 77 feet by 17 feet. And then another property had two 39 by 11 foot units. So these are, these are pretty significant, you know, size solar panel installations going in for, for people's individual use. We've had several commercial projects come in on currently undeveloped land. We have started noticing that many of the projects that are coming in are needing variances in order to be able to accomplish the proposed work. So in some ways, it almost starts to indicate that to some degree, some of the quote unquote easily developable land that's available for sale to be built on has really kind of already been, been built on. So people are looking to build on, on somewhat more difficult sites in a lot of ways. We do anticipate these large projects will take a couple of years to complete if and when they become approved. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, all of these projects that do come through have become about through a significant commitment for volunteer time, not only through participation in the meetings, but also site visits. Planning Board members attend site visits for every project that comes in to the Planning Board. So looking ahead to this year, we are anticipating our meetings to be virtual for most, if not the rest of the year. I'm guessing right now it's probably going to be the rest of the year, but we'll see. Our HAPAC referrals, which is the Historic Archaeological Committee, the number of referrals to them are increasing. And some of those referrals are for very historic properties in the town of Reinbeck. There's, there's some proposals for, for development, rehabs and changes on properties that are, that are very, very historic within the town. We do anticipate seeing a lot more addition and renovation projects on existing residential properties as people are moving into town. And, you know, since COVID has started in particular, one of the things that we did happen to notice, just based on looking at application contact info, is that a lot of people are moving up from New York, the New York City area, which is to be expected. That's not just in Reinbeck. It's happening all up and down the Hudson Valley and beyond. We are anticipating more onsite ground mounted solar projects to come in. We do believe we may see a few conservation subdivisions, which I believe might be a first. Or if not a first, it would be the first if we've seen them in a long time. So that, that'll be an interesting kind of new one for us that we haven't dealt with in a while. Again, the projects are on increasingly constrained lots. That's kind of coming about because of the, you know, the request for variances. We do anticipate a number of those large projects are going to seek approval this year and look to start building in 2021. And of course, we are happy to once again have a full Planning Board roster to help split up the workload as we move forward. So, you know, when I mentioned, you know, what we think is coming up, the list that's here on the right shows all of the pre-Apps that have come in, some of which at this point now have actually come before the Planning Board, but many of these have not. So we have dozens of existing projects that have come in for a pre-conference meeting that still have not come to the Planning Board for review. And this list kind of shows that it's not 100% accurate, but it's pretty close. The vast majority of these still haven't come to the Planning Board for, for official review, but did come in for a, a pre-app, pre-conference meeting. So there's no guarantee that these are going to come in, but we keep, we keep track of them, anticipating that there's a potential they could. And then every month, we typically see six to eight new applications coming in. So we keep adding to this list. This was just a flow chart we put in for the Planning Board meeting. I don't think I need to go through necessarily with everyone on the call here, just kind of showing how things work their way through the process, coming into the zoning administrator, working their way through the Planning Board Secretary, and then into a pre-application conference, and then eventually for official submission with the Planning Board. And with that, that's my kind of quick overview of what we did last year. It was a busy year. We expect this year to be a busy year as well. And I'm happy to take any questions you have, or if you have any for Michael and Melody.
Thank you, Jim. Just for the public, a couple of comments. Would you please forward this presentation to our clerks and they'll link it to your page? This is great. And for the public, does every, I know the answer to this, but does every project that comes in have to go before the Planning Board?
Every project that is submitted to the town for a building permit? No. It, it depends on the, what's being submitted.
So this is just a fraction of what's going on in our very busy town?
Oh, certainly. Yeah. I, I didn't track the building permits, but if I put that number up there, it would, it would be.
Yeah, there's several, several hundred.
Yeah.
And one thing I noticed Everready was on the list. What is happening with Everready?
I don't know. Michael or Melody?
There's a line in front of it.
I haven't heard anything in a while.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Josh. There's a for sale sign in front of it.
Yes. For the public, we have had nothing to do with Everready not being renovated. It is the owners and their permit before the County Department of Health, which says that they have to update their sewer before they can renovate. It's been an eyesore and a problem for us for five years now. And we hope it gets sold and something gets done. So it's, it's beyond the scope of what we can do, aside from people letting the owners, who also own the Everready in Hyde Park, know that, you know, we'd like for them to, to, to move along with this. But thank you. This is an excellent, excellent presentation. Any question? Thank you, Jim. Any Town Board members have any questions?
Oh, thank you, Jim.
Okay, great. Moving along. Thank you, Melanie and Michael and all the other Planning Board members. It's a, it's, it's a tough job, really. We, we're the legislative body. We write the laws, but we trust you guys to really look at the projects and shepherd them through with an eye towards what we all want to achieve with our comprehensive plan and our zoning law. So thank you. Really keeping Reinbeck, Reinbeck rural and our open space preserve rests with you. And, and you do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Moving along. You guys ready?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, resolution, I will make a motion for Resolution 2021-062 for the installation of our kayak launch at the Reinbeck waterfront. May I have a second?
I can.
I'd like to make an amendment to this. I would like to add a where as we will transfer $6,000 from account 000-01-1910400, which is contingency to 00005-5720-200, Town Landing Dock Equipment and Improvements. May I have a second on the motion to, you know, amend this resolution?
I can.
All in favor of amending the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All in favor of the amendment to fund the kayak launch at our dock. I moved 6,000. It's not going to cost 6,000. We'll move it back. This isn't labor. We're going to save money on the docks. We'll come in under. And also, Norm has promised to work on a grant to convert this, this launch to an handicap accessible one, once it's in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. I would like a motion for Resolution 2021-063, hiring Lori Doty as an auditor for certain town departments' cash payments.
Second.
Who, who motioned it?
I thought you did.
No, I didn't. Is that you, Sean? So I'll take you for a motion.
No, no.
And Alan, I'll take you for a second. Any discussion, any questions? Several years ago, the board wisely went from doing the audits ourselves, because we're not accountants, to hiring an accountant to do our cash audits. Yeah, it's a good, it's a good thing. We, we like, we like professional oversight. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Resolution, I need a motion for Resolution 2021-064, sale of used highway equipment.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Any discussion, any comments for the public? Bob Wyant has costed out our old grader, Bob?
Grader, yeah.
Yeah, you're, yeah, our grader. And since we are selling it to the town of Mylan, and we believe we have a very good price for it, we don't need to go out to competitive bids. So we will miss our grader and we'll wish the town of Mylan lots of good use out of it, like we got. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob. You need a motion for Resolution 2021-065 for the HVAC repairs at the transfer station, Ed.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, Alan. Is there any discussion, any comments for the public? We're going to put some more adequate heating and air conditioning in there for our staff. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2021-066 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 40 checks totaling $972,742.42. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. For the public, this is so whopping big, because I think we're paying the libraries and the fire departments the tax that we collect for them. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Any new business before the board? Discussion items. Purchase of a mini excavator by the highway department. Take it away, Bob Wyant. And you're on mute. You gotta unmute yourself.
It's on your, it's on your screen. It's on your, it's on your screen.
Bobby, on your screen. Yeah, you got it. Hi, Bob.
Hello. Hello.
Thanks for joining us. I wanted you, I wanted you to talk because, you know, we got, we purchased him or we received a mini excavator about five years ago? Is it four years ago?
On the shared services. Yes.
From our shared services and we share it with four other municipalities.
Yes.
And what we're finding is that it just isn't enough time for us. Uh, you know, road season is finite and um, go ahead, Bob. Take it away.
Yeah, uh, work on the roads usually begins in uh, Memorial Day and ends on Labor Day. That's usually a construction period. And there's four other towns, so we're lucky if we get the excavator for one month. Uh, we got it last year and um, it's got a new brush cutting head on it, which uh, is good for behind guide rails and uh, briar bushes and all that stuff. It makes it a lot easier to maintain.
And we can use it outside of road construction season for mowing and flailing and cleaning.
Well, it's in the parks and, you know, I talked to Gary down at the cemetery, told him that we're thinking about getting one. Um, so it, it, it would be a great piece of machinery to have full time. I never when we're changing out a pipe on the road with the, with the backhoe, we have to close off both lanes because we have a truck on one side of the backhoe. So car comes, we gotta move the truck. We gotta move everything. It takes a lot more time. With the excavator, the excavator swings around 360 degrees, so we can put the truck in the same lane that the excavator is working and keep the road fairly open. So.
And how much is, what's gonna, how much is it going to cost?
Uh, the excavator is on a Sourcewell bid, which means uh, we wouldn't have to go out the bid for it.
For the public, because it's on state contract or county contract, we can piggyback off that and buy it without.
Right. It's, it's sixty two, sixty two thousand dollars, 140, sixty two thousand, 148 dollars. Uh, the brush hound mower, they call it, is $9,486. It's coming with a hydraulic thumb and we found that the hydraulic thumb works very good for picking up wood. And especially when we're doing culvert pipes, because when we take out the old pipes, a lot of times it gets ripped.
And we're going to be doing that. So we have several pro- projects coming up for that.
Yes. So um, after we sell the grater, we get the money from the grater. I'd like to put in for a, an excavator.
And we have money, we have money saved in equipment. What do we have in there? 60 or 90?
We have $60,000 in this year's budget and we have approximately $160,000 in the capital equipment fund past years of money that wasn't used. So.
Thank you for your, thank you for your, I just got, I just want to call you guys. I, I support this. Um, you know, anything that makes, Bob is uh, really uh, wonderful at keeping a lot of projects in-house. And I think that while it's great, we have shared equipment. This is something we need all the time.
I agree.
Hope you, I hope you'll consider it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Josh, Alan, I think we'll have it on our next agenda. I think we have a positive calling here.
Paul, did you send the spec on the new, the, the thing you're considering?
Yes.
All right. I'll dig it out. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for coming.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and thanks for all the work on, on the roads this winter. I know.
Thank my crew.
Not over yet. I don't want to jinx it. And thanks to the guys. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really your crew, but thank you. Um, okay, uh, anything else? Any public comment?
I just wanted to mention one thing. I, I had my uh, regular meeting with the PCA guys, the IT support we have. They're going to recommend that we go to what's called two factor authentication for security, which means that when people log on, instead of just giving a password, it also does a second thing, which, which could involve, for instance, a phone call back to a cell phone or a text message to a cell phone or an email or whatever. So the idea is that that would close uh, the security problem of having passwords that people can hack. Uh, the people in town hall who are at fixed workstations won't see much of a change because once the fixed workstation is identified, we'll buy two factor authentication, but doesn't have to be done again unless the password changes. If you're mobile, on the other hand, it'll always be two factor authentication, which in some ways might be confusing for some of our people. We, we're going to get a proposal for PCA uh, for education and oversight while this happens. Uh, it's going to cost somewhere in the, it's not going to be expensive. Looking at somewhere well, well under a thousand dollars. But um, I just wanted to give you a warning and if you talk to some of the people we liaise with uh, and let them know this is coming, uh, I'd like to get feedback if we haven't, if people are concerned about it.
All right.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by people we liaise with? Have you spoken to the village?
The village has, is separate. This is, the village is looking at the same thing. So this doesn't affect the village. I'm talking about the highway department. I'm talking about the cemetery. I'm talking about the transfer station, all the different groups that are out.
Alan, why don't you just, why don't you just write an email and send it out to all of our employees and just let them know?
Okay. I tell you what, I'm going to. I get the.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank, what? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any new business before the town board? Or any public comment on non-agenda items from all the town board members, our highway superintendent, our tech support or our town clerk? Because that's all that's left. Hearing nothing, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening and we'll see you on the 22nd. Thanks.